Anybody else did, but I'd like to read them before we approve them. So if no one has an objection, we'll put them off to the next meeting.
No objection. Approval of the abstracts. Make a motion to approve abstract number 16 dated April 17, 2019, and abstract number 17 dated April 24, 2019 as presented.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Any objections or abstentions? I'm sorry. There being none, we pass. Before we move to the public hearing tonight, we had a kind of out of the ordinary event happen. We have a, we convened, or actually the chair of the planning board convened a special meeting to pass a cut and fill permit, which is required anytime someone moves more than one 10 yards or whatever dirt. At any rate, we had a gentleman who has asked for 200 yards of, we have quite a bit of, I'm gonna call it spoils, is dirt that was dug up in our highway garage facility. We have Don here with us, so if I miss something, Don, please jump in. But basically, the contractor who put in, so we have all this dirt, and I'm being told that we can't, nobody, very few people or nobody wanted it until this gentleman, particular gentleman stood up and said he wanted some loads of it. My understanding is that, well, we know this to be true, the contractor who put in the sewer line, put it in wrong. So the sewer line inspection with the county failed. They are going to have to at their expense take this line back up and repair it, and we have a large amount of dirt covering the line. So if we were going to pay to move it, Chris has a very short window to do that, and to get these, to move the dirt if we were to move it, because paving will begin soon. So at any rate, this gentleman asked if he could have it. It's been a longstanding policy of this town that we move spoils, whether it be from the roads being repaired, and concrete, stones, and dirt and stuff that isn't moved. We, it's been a longstanding policy of this town under multiple boards and multiple supervisors that we deliver it for free within side, inside the town of Cicero. So we talked it over tonight, we wanna make sure that everything we are doing is legal. So Chris, based on your recommendation, and Mr. Snyder, based on your recommendation that the fill is worthless, you're gonna go ahead and pass a resolution just to make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's, that allowing this stuff to be given away is of no value or declared no value to town Cicero. So you have a resolution for us?
Yes, you're gonna move for the adoption of resolution declaring up to approximately 10,000 cubic yards of dirt and gravel located at the highway garage site as surplus and of no value.
Can I just say, so moved? So moved?
Second.
Any further board discussion?
Yes, there is. Today was the first day that I was made aware of this whole situation, other than the fact that I'm aware of the dirt that has been on the site since it was placed there. I have a concerns, first of all, because it's being declared as of no use. I find that is not true. I know that there are several contractors, developers, who would find that there was a use for it. My problem is that if it was advertised as free and free delivery, that there would be several people that would step up to the plate and ask for it. So I have a major concern because this is taxpayers' money that's moving it, and this is taxpayers' money that's giving it away. And 10,000 cubic yards of fill, and it's not concrete, it's not spoils, it's not anything that's dug up from the road. It is reasonable, good fill with drainage that can be used by several other people. So I am, I don't believe that we have gone about this properly to allow the taxpayers in the town of Cicero to have an opportunity to step up to the plate as well.
Mr. Woznicki, can you describe, is this topsoil?
No. As with this board, under Judy's, under Judy's supervisor, we gave spoils away. It's, anything we dig up on the side of the road, as long as, and it's what is dug up, it's the highway grass. There's rocks, there's stones, there's pieces of branches and wood and this stuff, it's, there's no better. If there's anybody else in the town that can take it, we will deliver it to anybody. If just so happens this gentleman will take up to 100 loads or 150 loads of it, which will help us immensely. But if anybody wants it, we'll take it to them, as long as they're in the town. And we've done this, I've been here 20 years, and we've done it for this 20 years, and I know when Frank Rigo was here, I do, I received probably 40 loads when I built my house, at no charge. All towns, you have to get rid of this stuff. It's not topsoil, it's nothing that's any good. It's just rocks and clay and, and all kinds of debris in it.
Is this individual taking all that we have, or just?
No, no, just he's taking a very, very small portion of it.
So...
I asked Mark to take and make the resolution for 10,000 yards, because this will also cover all our ditchings and roadwork for the summer.
So it's fair to say that if there's, if there are contractors to which Ms. Boiki was referring, that they may also be able to?
Believe it, I'll deliver it to everybody. The people that could actually take it are few and far between in this town.
I think it's important to point out that we are only voting on the, whether or not this has any value to the town, not who receives it or how much they receive. So, you know, if, if, it's Mr. Woznicki's jurisdiction, if he's telling me that it's of no value, then I, I trust his judgment. I'm not, if I was voting to give it to a specific person, I might feel a little differently, but this is only about whether or not it has no value.
This project is something I've been working on for four years.
And you've been paid well for it.
I've been paid a lot of money for it, so I have the right to stay out here because of the large check to, to inform you. Our long-term plan at the Highway Garage is to have a solar farm. Believe it or not, a lot of this dirt that in fact we'd love to have people take away, Chris will take it away to them, is in the area that we envision in the future a solar farm. We've talked about putting a solar farm on the road, but that void guarantees and stuff, and it also is not easy to get to. This should be a ground mount system. It's not today in the works, but it's something that we talked about in the past when we were working on this project.
We need to read it.
The fill that we're taking away is not something that, I mean Judy says drains well. Well, I hate to tell you, but most of the stuff in this town doesn't drain well, that's why we live in a swamp. And I know there are people in this room that in fact have received 40 and 50 loads of this material, that right now, they're saying we shouldn't have given away. Well, we've been giving away for years, we gave away to some of the people that are yelling at us today for doing this. It's, I'll tell you, it may be some funds to the individual that gets it, but if we don't do this and handle it this way, it, I know that part of what we're moving, we already had a proposal for $10,000 to move it back on the site. We won't have to do that if we pull off what we are doing now as far as giving it away. And we can, in fact, by what we've approved today, we can now push the site contractor to get in there and correct the mistakes that they made on the insulation of the sewer work, so we can move this project forward, so.
Times of essence, is what you're saying, we need to move it now.
We do. I have about, about a two-week window to stop, and then we start roads, and my equipment will be tied up, move for the summer.
The other part of the issue that I have is the fact that I didn't know about this until this morning. I find it...
Judy, that's my mistake. When I made the phone call yesterday at noon, I forgot to call you. I told you I'm sorry. I can't do anything else than say that.
Mr. Snyder, I'm not blaming anyone, other than the fact that the sewer problem didn't come up today. Obviously, there's been a situation with it. We've talked about these two piles of dirt. I just feel that, and obviously I'll be blamed for it, so I don't really care, because I am here as an elected official to represent the people of this town. And having open government is one thing that is very important to me. And regardless of the timers of the essence, that has everything that seems to be going on at Highway Garage lately is the timing of the essence. I appreciate it, I understand it, and you can blame me for it being a year and a half of not even getting started. That's fine. But it's open government, and I am sick and tired of being blamed for passing a word around or telling people things that aren't true, when in fact I have never notified myself. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? There being none, we pass three to one.
Thank you.
I will now open a public hearing to consider changes to Chapter 130 of the Town Code related into junkyard licenses. I approve the publication and posting. And right before we open the public hearing, I'll make this, one of the things that we committed to do was clean up the code since they, as we became aware of deficiencies in the code, or not only deficiencies, but where code sometimes contradicted other code. There's been a lot of them unfortunately in this town, and we are moving ahead, and I wanna thank counselor and attorney Harper for working on this and addressing it, so I'll turn it over to you.
Well, this first, I mean, actually, three of the four of these are pretty mundane tonight. This has to do with when the applications need to be received by for junkyard licenses. As you can see from the PDF, we have the current code on the left. Steve, you wanna address this, since you're the one that really handles the license after the inspections?
Sure. So the junkyard licenses are renewed and applied through the town clerk's office. They require an inspection from our office relative to their operation, really as a set of concerns, whether their fencing is up, so on and so forth. That has to be done if they're renewing the junkyard license, as currently stated, April 15, when, during inclement weather, and it's not usually advantageous for us to get out there, get on the sites and get around the sites. So this was an effort to move that date to later in the year, which I believe is, is May 1.
May 1.
Okay, so in order for, for the application to be filed and give it the time for us to get out there and look at them to approve that.
Right, because my understanding was of the current system, if there is inclement weather, the license expires April 1st, we may not get out there until the middle of April, which is why we have the, the application has to be by May 1st, but the license runs from June, that would be example.
Correct, correct. That's what I...
Okay. Would anyone, we'll open up the public hearing, would anyone like to speak either for or against changing Chapter 130 of the Town Code relating to junkyard licenses? There being none, I will close the public hearing, and I'll move for the adoption of resolution to accept the changes to Chapter 130 of the Town Code relating to junkyard licenses to be known as local law number seven of 2019 as presented. I need to read this whole law, you know, do I need to read it into the record? I do not. Okay, so I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Any further board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you. Public hearing, Chapter 166. We will now conduct a public hearing to consider changes to Chapter 166 of the Town Code relating to fees for sewer connections. I approve of publication and posting. Counselor Harper.
Oh, there's two changes here. One, actually, Ms. Cosmo, if you could scroll down to the next page. This is an addenda, it should be called an addendum, which was adopted in 1975 and amended in 1994. A lot of the Town Code allows us, the Town Board, to set certain fees. They normally get made part of the Town Code. The whole point of having a Town Board do it is so that we can change it whenever we want without having to have a new public hearing. For some reason, this was put in the Town Code, and it's obsolete, so part of what we're doing in 166 is deleting that. Could you scroll back up, Ms. Cosmo, to the previous page? Thank you. And the other thing we're doing is striking the last paragraph, or last sentence, excuse me, of Section 166 dash, 16B, which allows us to charge separate, or different fees, but we don't do that. And so basically, all we're doing is eliminating something that's, we've done the unused. Did I cover it? Is this appropriate?
Correct, yeah, the policy, we have a different policy. It's obsolete, we don't, we just don't use that anymore.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing, would anyone like to speak either for or against amended Chapter 166 of the Town Code relating to fees for sewer connections? There being none, I will now close the public hearing. I will move, I, again, I don't have to read this, right? So I make a motion to, to consider changes to local law 166 of the Town Code relating to fees for sewer connections to be known as local law number eight of 2019 as presented.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you. I'll now open, or we'll talk about a public hearing for Chapter 188 to consider changes of the Town's Code relating to swimming pools. I approve of publication and posting. Counselor Harper.
Ms. Cosmo, if you could scroll down two pages. All we're doing here is another mundane change, is changing the definition of swimming pool in Town Code to match up with the definition found in the New York State Fire Prevention and Building Code.
Correct.
The state definition appears to be better, and so we're just harmonizing our definition of the states.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing, would anyone like to speak either for or against changing Chapter 188 of the Town Code relating to swimming pools? There being no one, I will now close the public hearing, and I'll move for the adoption of resolution to consider changes to Chapter 188 of the Town Code relating to swimming pools to be known as local law number nine of 2019 as presented.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Pass unanimously, thank you. We'll now have a public hearing to consider Chapter 210. We'll open a public hearing to consider changes to Chapter 210 of the Town Code relating to non-conforming structures. I approve of publication and posting. Counselor Harper.
Ms. Cosmo, if you could scroll down a little more, it's at sub three that we're... The current code basically says that if you have a, I mean, use the term grandfather, I think we all know what that means, even if it's not like really a legally correct term, term, if you have a, a, a structure or a lot that conformed under previous versions of code, but is not confirming, conforming with the current code, as the law is written now, you can't make any improvements to that property, even if those improvements have nothing to do with the non-conformity. So basically, without, without applying for variance. Basically, it really restricts, people have legal property, it's legal, but it still restricts their, their ability to make improvements to that property without going through the procedure of applying for variance. This just, I mean, I think the change is pretty self-explanatory, this just removes the necessity of obtaining a variance, makes it easier for people to improve their properties.
Thank you.
Is this appropriate? Do I need anything out?
Nope, that's absolutely correct.
I will now open the public hearing, would anyone like to speak either for or against changing Chapter 210? There being none, I will close the public hearing, and I move for the adoption of resolution to consider changes to Chapter 210 of the Town Code relating to non-conforming structures to be known as local law number 10 of 2019 as presented.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Again, thank you.
Move the adoption of resolution to schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, May 8, 2019 at 6:30 PM to consider changes to Chapter 120 of the Town Code relating to filling and excavation.
Second. Any board comments?
It's kinda funny that we're doing this tonight, because we just had a planning board meeting about filling excavation. This takes the authority for granting those permits from the planning board and gives it to the Department of Planning and Development, so it won't have to be for the planning board to basically discover codes. Do you have permits?
Correct.
Right. Thank you, John. Any, any further comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption of resolution to schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, May 8, 2019 at 6:30 PM to consider changes to Chapter 210 of the Town Code relating to zoning maps.
Second. Sorry, we have a second, John.
This one, the, this part of the Town Code refers to the zoning map that was updated on a certain date, but that map is updated periodically, so basically, all this does is just changes the language to reflect that it's updated periodically, and that there's not just only one zoning map updated seven years ago, there's more modern and more up-to-date maps available.
Thank you. Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption of resolution to schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, May 8, 2019 at 6:30 PM to consider changes to Chapter 210 of the Town Code relating to signs.
Second.
John?
Right now, and we're gonna be, gonna be going on a more comprehensive review of our signs ordinance, but with the upcoming political season, it makes sense to deal with this one now. Right now, we have a code that says that you can only have political signs up within a certain window before and after a primary general election. There's numerous cases from the, from the Supreme Court all the way down to various district courts, that say that that kind of content-based regulation violates the First Amendment, and there's essentially no way to do that kind of content-based regulation without violating the First Amendment. This does not make political signs completely unrestricted, they still have, would still have to conform to rules regarding, you know, blocking views of traffic, public safety, obscenity. Basically, what this is saying is it takes away the, the, you can only have it up X number of days before an election, and take it down X number of days after, because there's numerous cases directly on point that say you can't do that. And just about every town in the state, and probably every town in the country, has these laws, and they're all unconstitutional. So rather than just leave it there and say, we're not gonna enforce it, it makes a lot more sense just to remove it.
Yes, it does. Uh, we have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We carry unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption of resolution to schedule a public hearing on Wednesday, May 8, 2019 at 6:30 PM to consider the submission of a second application for the 2019 community development block grant funding for the Burris and Hamlin revitalization throughout Dodge County, as well as amending the five-year consolidated plan as required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
John?
This is one that's not mine, actually, Ms. Cosmo.
No, 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 you're right, absolutely, you're right, you're right.
The county put out a second round for community development this year, anywhere from $50,000 to $150,000. The maps for HUD were changed, so the areas of the town have greatly changed in what areas are eligible, and it put the rubers and area back into play for grants. And so we're, I was just given this by Mark last week on Wednesday-ish, so I've only had about a week to work on it. I'm working on probably the Route 11 stretch that we are going to be working on. Right now, the town has a grant for the Guy Young intersection to Baldwin Street on both the east and west sides, for probably 2020 to work on. So I think we're looking at two areas, either Baldwin to Library on the west side, or the intersection of Vent Street, both east and west, but in talking with DOT, because of the bridge concerns, they don't want us touching that intersection, so we backed off to the west side. $150,000 really isn't a lot of money. 25% of that would have to be town dollars going into that project as part of this application. And I hope to have that information to the board by next Friday at the latest.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody. Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption of resolution to approve the following appointment to the town clerk's office. Barbara?
Charesia.
Say it again?
Charesia.
Charesia.
Sh.
Charesia. As a part-time seasonal deputy town clerk, at a pay rate of $14 an hour effective April 25th, 2019, it's budget code A14101.
Second. Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you.
Please apologize to Barbara for me for a day.
Thank you.
Move the adoption of resolution to approve the following appointments to the Parks Recreation Department. Benjamin Stevenson is recreation attendant for day camp at a pay rate of $11.50 per hour, effective June 17, 2019, budget code B7140.1. Francesca Antonello is a recreation attendant for extended care at a pay rate of $11.50 per hour, effective June 17, 2019, budget codes B7140.12. Pamela Chikowsky is a recreation attendant for office day camp at a pay rate of $11.50 per hour, effective June 17, 2019, budget code B7020.11, and B7140.1.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption of resolution to approve the title and pay rate change for Diane Valen from a recreation attendant to recreation leader at a pay rate of $15.50 per hour, effective June 17, 2019, budget code B7140.12.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Highway Garage Project Change Order, Building Innovation Group. I move for the adoption of the following resolution, and we'll read it in its entirety as follows. Hereas, the Town of Cicero Board herein here and after referred to as the Town Board has awarded the construction of the, of A Highway Facility at 6658 New York State Route 31, Town of Cicero. The award of the general construction portion of the project was to Building Innovation Group. Whereas, the general contractor responded to RFP GC-17 dated 4/10/19. In summary, this item include change in flooring finish from epoxy floor to green ice start, green ice stop, and green ice snow camp. This changes to the highway garage spaces 128 and 129, along with the garage areas rooms 121 to 125, and rooms 114, 117, 119, 120, and 124. These are updates for the RFP prepared by MRB Group to the general contractor. Whereas, the adjustment to the contract per the reference RFP provided is a credit of This will be in the form of a change order. MRB Group has reviewed the cost provided by the contractor and found that it was acceptable based on the change in work required. MRB Group has prepared change order GC-06 in the amount noted. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Board accept change order number GC-06 to Building Innovation Group Incorporated. The Town Board further resolves that the supervisors to sign the change order GC-06, authorizing a credit in the amount of $15,511, which will be deducted from the contract of Building Innovations Group.
Second.
Any board comments? Chris, and Don, and Don, you guys did an excellent job of this. You're finding money where I didn't, who would think that there's money available? You guys did an excellent job, and they replaced the epoxy floor with a finish that the engineers say is not only more durable, but less expensive, in this case by $15,000. Thank you. That being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you. I move for the adoption of resolution of the following resolution, and I will read it in its entirety as follows. Whereas, the Town of Cicero Board herein after referred to as the Town Board has awarded the construction of A Highway Facility at 6658 New York State Route 31, Town of Cicero. The award of the general construction portion of the project was to Building Innovation Group. Whereas, the general contractor responded to RFP GC-12 dated 3/12/19, RFP GC-15, and GC-16, both dated 4/5/19. In summary, these items include deduction of painting areas on exposed mechanical piping conduits, closet of room 105B, and mezzanine stairs. All updates are per RFPs prepared by MRB Group to the general contractor. Whereas, the adjustment of the contract per the reference RFPs provided is a credit of $2,433. This will be in the form of a change order. MRB Group has reviewed the cost provided by the contractor and found that it was acceptable based on the change in the work required. MRB Group has prepared a change order GC-05 in the amount noted. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board accept change order number GC-05 to Building Innovation Group Incorporated. The Town Board further resolves that the supervisors to sign the change order GC-05, authorizing a credit in the amount of $2,433, which will be deducted to the contract of Building Innovation Group Incorporated.
Second.
Again, thank you for what you're doing on this project. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you. Thank you. We'll take a sip of water before the next one. Move for the adoption of the following resolution and I will read it in its entirety. Whereas the Town of Cicero Board herein hereafter referred to as the Town Board has awarded the construction of a highway facility at 6658 New York State Route 31, Town of Cicero. The award of the plumbing construction portion of the contract was to Brash Mechanical Incorporated. Whereas the plumbing contract responded to RFP PC-02 dated 4/2/19. In summary, it decided includes not to paint, sprinkle piping. This is an update for RFP prepared by MRB Group to the plumbing contract. Whereas the adjustment to the contract per the reference RFP provided is a credit of $7,420. This will be in the form of a change order. MRB Group has reviewed the costs provided by the contractor and found that it was acceptable based on the change in work required. MRB Group has prepared change order PC-01 in the amount noted. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board accept change order number PC-01 to Brash Mechanical Incorporated. The town board further resolves that the supervisor is to sign change order PC-01 authorizing a credit in the amount of $7,420 which will be deducted to the contract of Brash Mechanical Incorporated. Looking for a second.
Second.
Any board comments? Again, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Again, thank you.
Highway Garage Project. Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the following expenses for the Highway Garage Project. $640 to TerraCon Consultants.
Second. Any board comments?
What's this for? Seeing as I can't get behind.
TerraCon, you can speak to this, Chris. TerraCon?
They're inspector, inspections.
Required by law.
Yes. For steel inspection.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move the adoption of a resolution to approve the following expenses for the Highway Department. $180,000 to Landco Companies for paving equipment operators and tech, Budget Code DB511255. $125,000 DE trolley for underground work, Budget Code DB511255. $10,000 J&L profiling for milling, Budget Code DB5111255. $500,000 to Barrett Paving for asphalt for paving 284, Budget Code DB511255. $6,800 to Mid Country Machinery for a four-month rental of the skid steal, Budget Code DB511041. And $6,500 to Crown Rust Protection for rust protection for the trucks, Budget Code DB513057.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move the adoption resolution to approve the following 284 agreement for expenditure of highway funds for 2019. That was in the attachments.
That was in the attachments. Correct. So that will be posted. Second. If we have a second, any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? Again, unanimous.
Fireworks permit approval. Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the, and authorize the supervisor to execute the following fireworks permits from the American League, American Fireworks Display LLC, of which all signatures were obtained, to the Cicero Chamber of Commerce on 6/15/19 at dusk to be held during the Cicero Community Festival at Sacred Heart Church. A request is also being made to waive the $100 fee for this as a non-profit organization. The Lakeshore Yap and Country Club on 4/27/19 at dusk, along with the acceptance of the $100 permit fee. Form of motion.
Second. Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We carry unanimously. Again. So this brings us to our discussion items. We have two issues, or two items for you tonight. One I'm very pleased to tell you about. For those of you who have been around and some of you have, we have had an issue long before I was here with Darlene's Brook. And the, it was decided years and years ago that the Darleens, there was a lot of issues and this goes under, over near Roger Burdick's property and the Price Chopper and Home Depot, that area. But anyway, there's pipes that go into the road and those pipes are now full of sediment and silt and they are ratty. So it was decided, I don't know, 10 years ago or more than 10 years ago, that this needed to be addressed. A few, a former board and supervisor hired an engineer and to try to get this thing done and whatever. So 10 years later, we're now bringing this to a conclusion. We've gone through all sorts of engineering. We cut down trees, we got permits, we had, the engineering people designed this thing, go back and forth with DEC, and we came up with, we're trying to get this project done this year, finally. And we came up $300,000 short for this project. So, and this is tens of thousands of dollars. Fortunately, we were able to secure federal funds for this, so no money comes out of pocket for the Town of Cicero. But here's the thing that I'm very proud to tell you. We got, we found out last week, or the week before last, it was on a Friday afternoon, that we were short $300,000 on this project. And we were initially asked to front $300,000 out of fund balance to complete this and then hopefully got some sort of grant. I said, "No way." So we, we were able to, with Kate's help from O'Brien here, we hastily put together a letter and made an appeal to the Syracuse Metropolitan Transportation Agency and I believe that part of it is based on our relationship with them, but they put other projects off and gave us to complete, all of the money we need to complete the project. So there will be no monies out of the taxpayers in the Town of Cicero's pocket. And this project, after 10 years, Chris, how many years? 10, anyway, right? Is finally, finally going to be done. So there will be excavation, there will be new pipes, there will be pipelining, and hopefully there'll be more fish for the kids to catch over there because I see them fishing on a regular basis. So anyway, that's good news. We've had some great news with grants and awards from the state of New York, so I'm very happy with that. But we have a sad note that we have to tell you tonight. One is, we have a potential of not opening Williams Beach. We cannot get people to want to be lifeguards, right, Jody? You want to speak to that a little bit?
Well, our, our major concern is we can't find supervising guards that have got enough experience to manage the beach and lifeguards as it is. And we're not alone in this city, the county, the state. A night of shores is short staff as well. It was the perfect storm. Both of our headguards, headguards and then the next in line, all got internships or full-time jobs, so they've gone on to other positions. But if we are not able to secure those, we can't get our permit to open the beach and unfortunately, we won't be open. We have kids that we've hired, but we need to be able to release them to find other jobs if we aren't going to be open. So we have about a three-week window of trying to find, and we have reached out to every possible source. The colleges, the newspapers, friends, family, asking anybody and everybody, who do you know who, you know, that could come and do something with us? We are competitive with our salary, so it's not that. It's just the lack of people getting certified and staying in the program.
So everyone else would be a lifeguard, not being a CICC or regionally, because we're like that critical, okay? I see no one raising their hands.
Ms. Rogers, as a supervising lifeguard, has that a separate certification for area of lifeguard certification?
It's not a, it's not a separate one. It just means that they've had a number of years in service of being a lifeguard or an assistant at a beach facility or pool. So they have to have at least two or three seasons under their belt of being a lifeguard or being an assistant to be the headguard.
Okay. Is that like a standard industry, standard term? Okay. So if we advertise, well, okay, supervising lifeguard.
And we've had it on our website, we've put it out on, indeed, we've put it everywhere. I mean, really, we've, we've done a lot. And we've talked with Greg Cross, we've talked to all of the different agencies that are certifying guards, the Boy Scouts, who have a huge swimming program here, based out of the Town of Cicero. There's just no one available at this point. So we're going to try, we're going to keep it up, but I just, I want to warn people that we may not be open.
Okay.
We will have to put staff there just to keep people out of the water and maintain the facility, but we wouldn't have public swimming.
Okay. And I have one last discussion item. I'm very proud to announce, you know, we, our, our tax receiver has done an outstanding job. This year, and there's been a misguided, in my opinion, misguided effort to eliminate our tax office. We, I think we proved that there was no savings and why this is, people are still, there's just a small group of people. I think it's political. I just want to let you know that with the proper management of the tax receipts, we generated, you generated, Nicole, for the Town of Cicero, how much in penalties and interest on the money that we collected?
The settlement to the town was $88,592 and some change.
Yeah. And let me see. You've automated the tax office, you can pay your bills online, you can print your bills online, you can pay them with a credit card, and that's all things that you have done. We have now done an intermunicipal agreement with the county, and you got kudos for that this week from the county, because they now print our tax bills and it saved us approximately...
It's because we use their software, we now don't have to pay as much for them to print the tax bills. It's the expenses of cotton pound.
So let me see, as an old manager, and I guess I'm still a manager, right? Because I managed the town since I was young. So we're paying you $53,000 and you save us $89,000. I think that's a pretty darn good job by any measure of anyone who understands management. Good job. Thank you. I will now open it up to public input when anyone would like to...
Excuse, excuse me, Mark. Can I just make that announcement?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. I would just like to announce that the 2018 Annual Update Document Report for the Town of Cicero has been...
All the board members got a copy of that. I would encourage all of you to look at it. I'm very proud of that. We've, this, this board has done very well with the finances of this town. And that, in black and white. I'll now open it, did you want to talk about...
Mark, just, yeah, Chris just reminded me of Earth Day on Saturday. We would love everyone and anyone's participation on Earth Day. We are going to be meeting at the Cicero Highway Department at 8:30 on Saturday, and I just hope for good weather. And I thank everyone for all of their help, the Parks Office and the Highway Department and the Police Department, everyone, it's a group effort. And I really hope, I know the Highway's been out there cleaning the streets and it's been looking good, so thank you very much, everyone.
And you know, I passed our Highway people in the area where I found the $50 bill last year, and I see they cleaned that area real, yeah, very close to it. Anyway, thank you, Chris. I'll open it up to public input when anyone would like to address the board.
I have a question. Couple of questions. With respect to the, Dave Riley, 8890, can I come back? With respect to the Section 284 highway funds agreement, do we have, so this is all of the things that we're going to be doing at the Town of Cicero in this year, and this, it totals about 3.28 miles of road, right?
That's it.
We have about 29 miles of road in the Town of Cicero, so I'd be told.
More than 29.
138. 38 miles.
Yeah, 38 miles of road.
How much is, is that, that's not a town road, though? Is it Mr. Wesmeck?
About, well, with, with county roads, it's close to about 145.
Okay, so the number you quoted is town road.
Yeah.
Okay. So you, are you guys responsible for all that 138?
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to know. When you guys are laying, I want to address the board, but you guys are just going to answer.
Please, please.
Ms. Rogers?
Give me the mic.
Yep. Your name.
Oh. I can just talk loud if people want to hear.
But it's for the recording, for the recording online.
Right. Um, oh, geez. Oh, is that now? Oh, so when you guys are, when you're laying down the asphalt, do you have inspectors that are part of the Highway Department? Or do you hire your own inspectors to make sure that they're going through?
We do it ourselves.
Okay. And when those inspectors are watching the contractors, are putting down the stuff?
We're there, we're there.
The hot mix of the asphalt, are they using the substance? My dad's a civil engineer and so, you know, some things about this, and when I was talking about it, he asked, there were some questions that he had about it, just in his experience doing this sort of thing. Are they using an HA5 compound or are they using the more, one of the...
The AD.
Okay.
The AD, I have to get back to you on.
Okay. Because I know that's a better material that's proven to do better work in terms of long-term...
I can't tell you, the, the blacktop we use today is nothing like they used 20 years ago.
Okay.
Everything has gone green, so it's not as hot as a mix, there's not as much emulsions in it. So it's whatever Barrett uses.
And for about half of these roads, some of them it says that there's going to be a total reconstruction, which I mean, which I assume to mean that they're going to get into the subgrade.